Okay, everybody is ready? We are now, our 22nd regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. Please rise. Invocation by Honorable Counselor J. Pasqual. So, Counselor Agasuan will lead the invocation, then singing of the Lupang Hinirang followed by the Kagayan di Oro March.
Let's be aware of the Holy Presence of God. May I request everyone to please stand. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, we trust in you, we believe in you, and when two or three gather in your name, you are in our midst. Lord, the daughter of calm is joy. We have calm in your presence, Lord, and you are here, at the center of our council. May you guide us, your wisdom, we need your wisdom and your strength, so that we may be able to arrive at the best possible solutions for the people of Kagayan di Oro. This we ask in your name, amen.
Anga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Ayang mahigitin, pero sa sila halan, halang napuso sa iti ko'y buhay. Kupang higitin, kaya ka nang mahigitin, sa man tutupin, kita pa sisigil. Sa ngatag, tutup sa sipoy at sa nganihong pagkao, ay ngatag, tutulag ako sa may kayang nilamahal. Ang isakap, matawat, gurit at gugay na natingin, ang itupin at talon ya kaygan, pangay di matigilin. Luwana talaw, ngarwa, dihatsingka, oey na bi't sa piliko. Ang bi'gaya na paray ngabi, ang malakay nam, na'hiusay lo.
Please be seated. Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Joseline B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer for the First District Councilors: Honorable Agapito E. Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger J. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimé Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Goaking, Honorable Jose P. P.S. Abu Jr., Honorable Malvern I. Espasia. For the Second District Councilors: Honorable Ivona Yaceni B. Imano, Honorable Maria Loris Isyaani, Honorable Jolene Mercedes Elbalaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suset G. Magtahas Daba. For the ex-official members: Honorable Yan Lam Es Lim, Liga ng mga barangay President, and Honorable Jan Michael Elseno, City Escape Federation President. Teresa Corom, Madam Presiding Officer.
Corom, this is hereby certified. Before we proceed, let us greet each and everyone a Happy New Year. Happy New Year to our guests, our friends from media, our viewing public, Kagayan Anons, Happy New Year. Counselors, Happy New Year. Our staff, Happy New Year. Mrs. Secretary, Happy New Year. Okay, so, let us start the New Year with a bang. Maginatso, New Year with a bang. Somehow, for the next session, may I require that everybody wear their barong. Kay magkuha ng tag video for the new Lupang Hinirang na atong, what you call this, the video. So, everybody should wear their barongs, no? And delay karongga, wala pa man si Suset, Suset is still coming pa. So, hopefully, next Monday, okay? And next Monday also, let us say goodbye to our neighbors. Let's say goodbye, I will rearrange the sit, our seating arrangement. I miss the people at the back. Michael Seno, Counselor Cabanlas, Counselor Romeo Calizo, and Counselor Alamlin, where have you been? Sila ang ato ipatubang, and I will do the rest, no, sa atong arrangement. So, ato re-arrange, so that every three months, ato re-arrange, so that you will be friends to everybody, close to everybody. Okay? Okay? Okay. So, Counselor, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you have the floor. Welcome home, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Since Counselor EB is very noisy, I would like to express, on behalf of the entire membership, thank you to Counselor EB for...
Eh, thank you pala.
The cookies.
Thank you for the cookies, EB. Counselor EB, a little treat to start 2023 with a smile.
Thank you.
Go.
Thank you also for the Christmas gift from the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, you're welcome.
From our colleagues who have extended their bountiful...
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And, Madam Presiding Officer, may I move to dispense with the reading of the minutes of meeting on December 5, 2022, for the regular session and the special session on December 28, 2022.
Any second objection? I hear non-motion is hereby carried.
I likewise move for approval of said minutes of meeting.
Second objection. I hear non-motion is hereby carried.
By the way, Madam Presiding Officer, I'm already using the technology.
So, you have your own technology. Who among, who among here is using their technology na? Ah?
So mga bata nun, so mga bata nun.
Alaka hard copy pa ako. Delay day ko mapalitan, ani. So, who are not using their hard copy? Oh, napamangyap ko kay kauban. Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, Counselor Roger Abadai, Counselor George Goaking, meaning? Delay na mo palitan ng laptop.
Actually, this is not laptop, Madam Presiding.
What is that? Di gaya kibal, what is laptop and iPhone?
Just cellphone.
Ah, regular phone.
It is short of saying that... What's that they nasabutan? It's the Vice Mayor who will provide? Ah, iPad?
Ano sa mapod ng iPad? It's smaller. It's smaller. Ah, na, pila na.
Wala lagi, pagutahan ah. Pila, pila daw, pila, pila.
Pila bawa, batte kay balo, nothing is impossible. Ah, libre.
Seventeen.
Atun ako. Ah, seven zero, ah, uli na ko. Anyway, si pagitanat pa agi para makatunpok ko.
Okay, that's good. And we would like to put that on record.
Can you put that in record? We will find a way, okay? Oh, where we will get the funds?
Include the secretary and his assistant.
Of course.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, thank you.
Ambush, na ambush. Anyway, we have two members of the council who would like to render their respective special reports, Madam Presiding Officer. First is Counselor Roger Abadai as regards the concerns of the people in the hinterland barangays, particularly barangay Lumbya who have been suffering for quite a time. The, their plight during season of, and so many blue flies. I searched langaw, blue flies daw, kay tungo kay color blue. But generally, they are fly covering the area.
Na, okay.
And the second reporter is Counselor Ed Cabanlas on his proposal to, to move City Hall to a place suitable for a service in Kagayan di Oro. He will render a special report.
Wala yung ibaluan eh.
Ah, now you know. Thank you, Madam Presiding.
Tell me in advance, okay? Okay, thank you. So, our first speaker is Counselor Roger Abadai, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Joseline B. Butodriguez, my colleagues in the 20th City Council, all people who are watching us online, and our friends, may hapun sa atanan. Happy New Year, Happy Three Kings.
Happy Fiesta of Nasarin. San Nasarin, no?
Just this morning, there was a procession and mass. So, Happy Fiesta. Now, actually, this is already a leftover issue, but because we have no session, I was not able to brought out this complaint. Perhaps some of you received some, in your, you know, messages in your phone, in the messenger and Facebook. This was only published. So, I received verbal and through message through, you know, through my phone with regards to this pestering or migration of, we call that blue flies, lagumba, mga langaw. Particularly in Lumbya, Kabula, and subdivisions in Lumbya. Subdivision in Lumbya, Bayanga, Dan Sulion, and Tangpangi, and some areas in Dahag, in Dahag. So, these are, two weeks ago, I received this complaint, Madam Chair and my colleague. Now, I based on my commercial investigation. Usually, kining mga blue flies, accosted nga nong na sila, tapok, kapistering, the, you know, tungo ni sa, because of the, you know, kining smell, sa foul smell, kining mga feces, boughels, carcasses decomposed of man, on animals, and so, mga trusses, atong mga garbes, naano sila, muna ilang favorite niya, you know. But, ang problema, kay nangabot na sila sa mga Balay, Tagbalay, sa atong mga kaigsuna, no? In fact, I was told that, di na sila maka kaon diya silang dining room, ilang kitchen, kay daghan kay langaw. They spent using, kining mga screens, some dibot spray insect killer. But, the problem is when it's dried up, so mahimong naano diya matapok ang mga patay ng mga, you know, sa problema nila sa kanang mga residents, so, mga kita sagok, mga ano tanak, na may atong doctor dini. So, this is also one cause or effect of potential spread of germs, kay kining langaw, kunselang makaon, mailasan na madala, no? Mutog dun sa mga pagkaon. So, that will cause any forms of diseases, especially infections sa atong intestine. It will cause diarrhea or other diseases. So, Madam Chair, in order to address this problem, may I move that a joint committee will inspect this barangay to find out the veracity of the presence of this blue flies, though. The committee, and meeting the Committee of Health Sanitation, headed by Doctor Counselor Doc. Malu Gani, and my committee, Madam Chair, to find out how really true or the, these blue flies are really existing, though. But, when you go to the somewhere kabulam makaon kadiya, na mga grindi, gabid, nagin mga langaw, nagin mga musagol, say mo pagkaon. So, atong purpose ni is to find out asan ni gikan, asan ni, nga naman i daghan kayga migration sa mga blue flies, kining mga lagung, langaw. So that we will also look for any measures to stop, eradicate, or if not, to listen the situation. Manamantan na to ng inspection sa bao, lapanamahuman, lapanato maadesso. Kani na sabang, tabangon karoon sa dua ka committee, Madam Chair, and we will recommend it in a proper time after our inspection and investigation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor, but is there, what you call poultry, napui poultry diya?
There are, there are.
Naasay babuyan.
Naasab, naasay mga...
So, we will go into details, no?
Well, that's why we have to...
Asa ginigikan.
We have to identify.
Yes.
Where is this, you know? Na namanamay, nanamantay sightings. But, we do not also just conclude, you know, without being, you know, proper...
So, you going to do the ocular?
Yes, we will schedule, we will schedule. Anytime this week, this week.
Okay, let's refer to the committee on health and environment. Okay, thank you, Counselor Roger Abadai, any question, any comments? Done? So, proceed, let's proceed to the next speaker, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Happy New Year.
Members of the City Council, meron mga guapo ba pagi... Naghangi ng, naghangi ng usad karoon. Of course, beautiful girl.
Beautiful kaya yan ko, and red.
The color of the year. Members of the media who are with us, and the guests who are with us, and the general public of Kagayan di Oro, good afternoon. Madam Chair, this report was made before by me, when I was a second termary Counselor of Kagayan di Oro. And it was just a dream, but I think we have to pursue the dream, because we are always thinking about the comfort and interest of our people. We have seen the City Hall of Tagom City. We have seen the City Hall of even the municipalities, the municipal halls, mga Balay, Marramag, Malitbo. Usalbadur.
Yeah.
And we have seen the beauty and the comfort and the usability, the utility of the effect of having a good City Hall or municipal hall. So, this time, I think our city is suffering some kind of discomfort and less mobility. And of course, it will affect the economic movement and the movement of our people. Ang kaganas sa pagbayad sa buhis, ang kaganas sa pagtuman sa mga balawon. Could be one of the reason why, na, dun na kita gamaing problema, is because we have a city hall where the offices are all scattered. When you apply for a business permit and you need the certification from the City Health, you have to go to the City Health. The fire department, you have to go to the fire. If you want to, if there is a need for you to go to the City Engineering Office, you have to go to the City Engineering Office. So, we are everywhere, this, public services everywhere. This is not the present modern concept now of a city hall. If you have seen the City Provincial Hall of Tagom, Dava del Norte... they have a government center, where everything there is inside each specific space. Cagayan Duro City is one of the fastest-growing cities in the Philippines. In fact, people admire us because of the speed of growth that we are experiencing. I think we have to move in tandem with this, the mobility of our economic growth. And we need a presentable, a City Hall that is, uh... There will be convenience on our taxpayers, on our people, on our visitors, a City Hall where we can be proud to present to the world that this is the City Hall of Cagayan Duro. The City Hall that everybody will be happy to see and will inspire the young, even the old. Now, I am thinking of a City Hall, Madam Chair, that will have everything, a one-stop shop, where if I will be transacting inside City Hall, I will not be parking in Kugun Market and then walk down here. Today, if you are paying, if we have a hub transaction in our City Hall, you cannot even park. I mean, it's very inconvenient. You have to pass, even in Divisoria, but you cannot even park in Divisoria. So you have to walk. So, I think it is time now for us to study what we can do to look for another place big enough and to construct our own City Hall. When this City Hall was constructed somewhere in the early part of, in the early part of the 1900s, during the Spanish times, the concept here is that if there is a church, a big church, then the barangay or municipal hall is in front of that big church. That is not anymore the present and modern concept of public service. City Hall must be big enough and independent and that would serve all the people, from the poor to the rich. City Hall where the PWDs can conveniently transact. City Hall where there will be elevators, escalators, wocalators, and everything. City Hall where office, all the offices in the, in the city government in one, in one sheltered area. That is our dream, Madam Presiding Officer. So, I move, because I think this is the clamor now of the majority members of the City Council, I move that we, City Council will refer this matter to four committees. The Committee on Ways and Means, the Committees of Counselor, Majority Floor Leader, Ian Nakaya, the Development, and Planning, the Infrastructure. I hope that Councilor Sino can still participate in the election. And then, in my committee, which is the Committee on Land Management and authorizing also the mayor to come up with a plan to submit to the City Council for approval. We don't have the manpower and the technical capacity to look into this issue, so therefore, the mayor, the executive department through the mayor will submit to us the plans and programs for the City Hall, and how it would be acquired, and how it would be constructed, and how it would be financed. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas. Yes, Councilor Michael Seno?
Good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy Fiesta.
Happy Fiesta.
Of course, to the members of the 28th City Council, Happy New Year to everybody. May hapun ka na tong tanan, friends from the media, pello Cagayanons. The special report of Attorney Edgar Cabanlas was very good, Madam Presiding Officer. Kung sabi ni Saya pa, sila pa doy magbayad, buluhisan daw, sila pagi doy mapurisyus pag-parking. Sa atong mga yanong kaigsunan, moy atong sarangga kadungan. And it is the right time, no? Ng, makapangita pod, kena pay areas na pwede kabalhinan, ang atong syudad. Kaya, sa atong nasabtan, medyo apiki na gyud, karoon, sagingon pa sa special report, katagkatag. One is to create a government hub, that's a very good, no? Uh, programs and, hopefully, sa amuan na mga batch, sa youth. Makatransact sila sa guberno kung na sila negosyo, Madam Presiding Officer. Kada di na kayo hassle sa pagbalin-balhin, from one place to another. Mahal na rawang crudo, taas na. And I'd just like to add, siguro, no? The resolution from the, the good reporter wanted to. Ng, ang kining property na to karoon, nga gamit, provided nga di na to ibalik ya. Dili-ibalik ya, kundili gamitun, diha pun, pabili diha pun sa city government, but pwede gamitun sa other purpose. No? Kaya, yeah, pwede gamitun, yeah, for a city college. Provided lang, Madam Presiding Officer, nga kung mubalhinta, ang City Hall dili-ibalik ya. It will still remains kay, ang historical value ka ng sa mayor's office. And then, siguro, kining sa legislative building, uh, of course, maghandong puntang, nga kung pagtransfer na to sa government hub, napui kaugalingon nga legislative building, which is the old pod sa City Hall. Okay, basi kita rin mabili na di, Madam Presiding Officer?
Atong tanan.
Atong, haha. So, naapul lugar dito dool, pero naghi, this is for legislative building.
Yes.
And guapo kayo, ng taon, nga we are an highly urbanized cities, nga napui ika-presentar lagi, nga muni ang atong syudad. So that's my only prayer, Madam Presiding Officer. I hope the proponent would consider also that, maputang gyud nga, we will not sell the properties nga gitindukan karoon sa City Hall, Madam Presiding. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Michael Seno. Any more comment? Actually, yeah, actually, I was so concerned with PWDs, no? Wala, di di sila kasaka. In fact, we are still repairing the elevator. If they have to go to my office, my staff has to go down, it will be home. So we are depriving them of the, of the, what you, the comfort unta, no? Being a PWD, mas comfortable unta sila, that they can go anywhere, no? Pero sa unta man, of course, atong building is already old and wala pagin na to na-upgrade, siguro, especially with our PWD. So it's about time, sa siguro, no? So any comment, Councilor Romeo Calizo, please?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to everybody. I fully agree with the observation of our good reporter this afternoon, Madam Chair. But I'm not sure if it is a safe assumption that things like this should already be included in the medium and long-term plans of the city government, especially the executive. Because this is already a very obvious observation. Why we want to impose order in our city? Our City Hall itself is a semblance of a seeming disorder. I don't know if, because I've not yet attended a meeting of the committee under our Majority Floor Leader, Committee on Development, as regards this. So with this, Madam Chair, I suggest that we communicate with the executive.
Yes.
Because this might be already at plan on the land use, as we have been discussing during our ELA seminar, Madam Chair. So that first, we can probably take a picture on what is the situation at hand. And if there's any, the executive might have already have initiated either a medium-term or a long-range development plan. Because indeed, if you compare, I agree with the observation of our good reporter, but if you compare Cagayan Duro with other cities, in fact, other municipalities within Mindanao, amorag na ulain na gyud ka sa Pacha Dahai o ga City Hall. And really, it affects service. So that's just my simple suggestion, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Romeo Calizo. For sure, the mayor is, also have plans, no? So we have, the legislative have to discuss with the mayor. Kebalokos obanyang plano, but then, transferring that will be a discuss between the executive and the members. Yes, Councilor Roger Abaday?
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer. I remember that in my first or second term as a city culture, dito pa sa, old building pangatong, uh, join pa sa me as executive and legislative. There was a plan by the previous administration to sell the area, the area, because it's now becoming relevant towards, uh, problema sa mga taxpayers over traffic. But there was strong opposition, so it was not true. So, uh, the opposition's reason, they opposed because of historic value of this place. But considering that our area now is already overtaken by time. Wala na, sangani, pag-parking na to, di na ta kamakapark. Maulaika, sakto tong surti sa reported, dito na ka di Divisoria or Kugun ka namo parking. Di ka ma, muna ka nanay mga parking, mga pay-parking karoon, no? So because of the, uh, bigger areas sa atong City Hall, so I strongly support the, uh... To transfer, for proper place, the issue is convenience and comfort. Not only for us, but for the people to be served by us. So, saktaganggang complaint, oh, pag-parking lang diya na mo visitas atong may, ganyan lang, na-traffic na, pilalangka, you know. So there is a necessity to relocate us in a place that's also conducive for public, you know. But again, my also, I also support that this place, this area will remain to be a city, you know, and this can be used in, uh... That can be convenient also for the city. Magamit ni, but it still remain as the property of the city. That's my concern, Madam Chair and my colleague. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilor Roger Abaday. Yes, Councilor George Gokey?
Dagdagan salamat, Honorable Vice Mayor Jocelyn Beboto Rodriguez and all my colleagues in 28th City Council, and my friends in media, and may hapun, fellow Cagayanons. Kani, I would strongly support the idea of Councilor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas that we will be moving out from the old City Hall to a newer place. It could be a government hub, but not necessarily selling the property or increasing taxes, but to avail of our resources. We have resources where we can have partners, or our credit line is very good, according to the Bureau of Local Government Finance, as long as it is in the term of investment. Kay self-liquidating manas siya, Honorable Vice Mayor, kay, listen, makay na, we will not even raise taxes. We have available resources that we can tap. In due time, I'd like to propose to the proponent, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, the process of resources without even raising taxes or selling our government properties. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilor George Gokey. Yeah, actually, we still are recovering. So let us maintain first to help the economy, boost the economy, help the businessman, help the business sectors. By that, siguro, nothing is impossible, no? If we dream of having a new place, then why not? Pero for now, let us just be very, very sensitive on the needs of our businessman. So, Councilor Attorney James Judith, you are recognized?
Sa atong tinahod nga Bisi Mayor, Jocelyn Beboto Rodriguez, sa akong cauder part sa mayorya, sa atong mga bisita, nga naanat apod sa likod nga bahin, sa atong gallery, dini sa session hall, sa atong pinanggang katauhan, sa nagbayan, sa Cagayan Duro. Senyong tanan, maupay. Uyun ko, Madam Chair, sagisugyut bali sa atong reporter, maupod sa giingon, sa samagya pun kang Consejal Seno, kang Consejal George Gokey. Pero natukmod ko, dito na kon, butagin gamutindog, musalmot bali sa atong, uh, kining hanay. Anik, pagbungat, anikabahin sa pagbalhin sa atong City Hall, sa bagong lugar. Ang ako lang ikadugang, nga katong ingon ni Consejal Gokey, nga naate pamaaging, nga magtukod ya na, inaninalangpon. Kining, ang atong modelo ang palulite, nga dili ilangpon ka para sa City Hall. Pwede pod na to nga iapeel ang mga nagadaiyang, mga line agencies sa atong national government. Ngadiin sila magabangpon sa maubaling nga gambalay. Wala na akong idugang, nga unta sa atong pagplano, kung naamangali tay plano, naamangali tay laraw, kabahin sa pagbalin sa atong City Hall. Pwede ba, nadili ilang City Hall, kundili ang mga nagadaiyang, mga line agencies, nga tawagon day na to, sa national government, tawagon day na to, one government plaza. Pwede pod ayon nga mag-self-liquidating kay magabangman ang kining mga nagadaiyang, mga line agencies sa ato, sa City Hall. Kala lang, dagdagan salamat.
Thank you, thank you very much, Councilor James Judith. Yeah, actually, this is very practical, no? If you build a structure, make some, make some points, no, along the way, that these other offices can be rented. Kay for now, kebalumantana grant ang mga different court of appeals renting sa ano, in the NSO, and the rest of the agencies are renting. So, siguro, income generating, but if we, if we construct something that is useful and income generating. Yes, Councilor Jay Pasqual?
May hapun vice, may hapun sa tanan. Happy New Year. Ang ako lang sa advice is, naunta, if naamangani tay plano, dapat naay commercial area, like ang mga banks, or Jollibee, or McDonald's, because pilakabook ang tao sa City Hall. And I think all the banks magilugyud na og space din ha. Kay, siyempre, uh, kung madto ka sa City Hall, magtransact, magigka, magamit ka gorta. So I think ang mga banko magilugyudan advice, and ang atong mga lain nga mga commercial na mga tindahan.
Thank you very much, Councilor Jay. That is a very good idea, no? Gakadok na ta, historian pagi na to, dakok na ta, di ba? Rental, the agencies, now, pagkaon, banko, kesa may dili mo rent, no? And we are generating income, so that is a very good idea. So anymore, no more? So let's proceed. Councilor, Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya. So we refer this to, to four agencies, no?
Committees.
Committees, four committees, okay. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Maybe one last remark to add to the discussion, Madam Presiding Officer. While there are manifestations being played and delivered by members of the council, the joint committees that has been introduced by the reporter should not be limited to the manifestations of the members of the council. Let's give leeway to the, to the members of the council who will compose the joint committee. So that we will not be limited to just these discussions that we have presently. So maybe perhaps there are more, better suggestions during the committee investigation. And maybe this building is, would augment to the, to the finding of the cost of the implementation of the new government center. So let's not limit.
Let's, let's invite all the committees because it's about us, all of us. So all committees should participate, okay? All councilors should be participated. That's a good idea. Thank you very much, Majority of Floor Leader.
So as suggested, and may I also propose, Madam Presiding Officer, corollary to the proposal, that the Committee on Subdivision and Land State, being the reporter of this subject matter, be the chair of the joint committee.
Okay. So, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, you are the chair of the said, joint committee?
Partner?
Okay.
Okay. Di man pwede nga to refer maglali sa mga chairman na, okay, sa'yo maglinko chairperson.
Okay. Okay.
So may we now proceed to the agenda proper, Madam Presiding Officer? Thank you. Omnibus motion for items 1 to 11 for having the same subject matter. Number 1 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 205, returning to barangay council of barangay number 8, the city. Its ordinance number 2, series of 2002, covering its, ah, okay. Number 2 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 206, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 24, the city. Its ordinance number 2, series of 2022. 3, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 207, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 31, the city. Its ordinance number 2, series of 2022. 4, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 208, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 36, the city. Its ordinance number 2, series of 2022. 5, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 209, returning to the barangay council of barangay Agusan, the city. Its ordinance number 2, series of 2022. 6, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 210, returning to the barangay council of barangay Bugo, the city. Its ordinance number 2. 7, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 211, returning to the barangay council of barangay Tindahag, the city. Its ordinance number 2, series of 2022. 8, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 212, returning to the barangay council of barangay Makasandig, the city. Its ordinance number 2, series of 2022. 9, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 213, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 11, the city. Its ordinance number 2, series of 2022. 10, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 214, returning to the barangay council of barangay Kaoswagan, the city. Its ordinance number 6, series of 2022. And 11, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 215, returning to the barangay council of barangay Pagatpat, the city. Its ordinance number 2, series of 2022, covering the respective supplemental budgets, number 1, for calendar year 2022 with estimated incomes, with the information that said ordinances are operative in their entirety. May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor Yan Lam Lim?
Councilor Yan Lam Lim, you are recognized?
Vice Mayor Joseline Rodriguez, mayhapun sa tanan, Presiding Officer. I move for omnibus of approval of proposed resolution number 2023 dash 205, proposed resolution number 203, 2023 dash 206, 2023 dash 207, 2023 dash 208, 2023 dash 209, 2023 dash 210, 203 dash 211, 203 dash 212, 203 dash 213, and 2023 dash 214, and 2023 dash 215.
Thank you.
Any second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to dispense second final reading.
Second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Omnibus motion, Madam Presiding Officer, for the items 12 to 21. 12, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 216, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 5, the city. Its ordinance number 2022 dash 12 dash 3, series of 2022. 13, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 217, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 10, the city. Its ordinance number 3, series of 2022. 14, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 218, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 25, the city. Its ordinance number 4, series of 2022. 15, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 219, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 4, the city. Its ordinance number 3, dash 2022. 16, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 220, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 16, the city. Its ordinance number 4, series of 2022. 17, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 221, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 17, the city. Its ordinance number 3, series of 2022. 18, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 222, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 19, the city. Its ordinance number 3, series of 2022. 19 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 223, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 39. Its ordinance number 3, series of 2022. 20 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 224, returning to barangay council of barangay Dansolion, the city. Its ordinance number 4, series of 2022. And 21, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 225, returning to the barangay council of barangay Patag, the city. Its ordinance number 12 dash 3, dash 2022, series of 2022, covering the respective and supplemental budgets, number 2, for calendar year 2022 with estimated incomes, with the information that said ordinances are operative in their entirety. Again, for the recognition of Councilor Yan Lam Lim.
Councilor Yan Lam Lim, you are recognized?
Mrs. Chair, I move for the omnibus approval. Everything is in order. I move for the approval of proposed resolution number 202, 2023 dash 26, 216, 2023 dash 217, 2023 dash 218, 2023 dash 219, 2023 dash 220, 2023 dash 221, 2023 dash 222, 2023 dash 224, 2023 dash 225.
Any second?
Second.
Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to dispense second final reading.
Second. Any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Again, for the omnibus motion for items 22, 229, Madam Presiding Officer, 22. Proposed resolution number 2023 dash 226, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 1, the city. Its ordinance number 6, series of 2022. 23, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 227, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 10, the city. Its ordinance number 2, series of 2022. 24, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 228, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 12, the city. Its ordinance number 1, series of 2022. 25, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 226, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 16, the city. Its ordinance number 3, 2 dash 2022. 26, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 230, returning to the barangay council of barangay Bayanga, the city. Its ordinance number 3, series of 2022. 27, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 231, returning to the barangay council of barangay Canitoan, the city. Its ordinance number 2022, series of 2022. 28, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 232, returning to the barangay council of barangay Lumbiada, the city. Its ordinance number 3, series of 2022. And 29, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 233, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 36, the city. Its ordinance number 3, series of 2022, covering the respective annual budgets for calendar year 2023 with estimated incomes, with information that said ordinances are operative in their entirety. Again, for the recognition, Councilor Yan Lam Lim.
Councilor Yan Lam Lim, you are recognized?
Madam Chair, everything is in order. I move for omnibus approval of proposed resolution number 2023 dash 226, 2023 dash 227, 2023 dash 228, 2023 dash 229, 2023 dash 230, 2023 dash 231, 2023 dash 232, 2023 dash 233.
Second.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to, move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number 30 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 234, adopting and or supporting the Cagayan Dioro City Police Officers Program entitled Revitalize PNP Kasimbayanan, Kapulisan, Simbahan at Pamayanan. A community mobilization program highlighting the synergized and collaborative partnership of the PNP and in the general public. Okay. I guess there's a misspelt of the name of the chairpan. May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor Romeo Caliso?
Councilor Romeo Caliso.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I thought I was, I was already this last of my position.
So, error.
But I know that's only a clerical error.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Anyway, there's a sudden shift in the police concept on law enforcement. And we should support this concept, Madam Chair. So I move for the approval of this resolution.
Yes, second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection?
May we ask the secretary to kindly make the necessary correction?
Okay.
Councilor James Judith? Asak to ang ala. Okay. 31.
Di ba, pagkano man?
The color of the year. You have not mentioned the color.
The color of the year is magenta, like Councilor J. Tindog ragon. Tindog ragon. Pero, pero wagin siya ni taas. Maoragin gapon yang height. Oh, muna yang magenta. Anyway, ahana ta.
It's not pink.
It's not pink. It's magenta, color of the year. So where are we now?
We are on the 31, Madam Presiding Officer. 31 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 235, calling for the accreditation of all civil society organizations. C S O's people's organizations in the city of Cagayan Dioro for purposes of its membership in the Committee on People's Organization in the City Development Council, CDC, per suwan to ordinance number 14334 dash 2022. May we move for the approval of this proposed resolution, Madam Presiding Officer?
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number 32 is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 89, authorizing the honorable City Mayor Rolando Aoe, representing the city government of Cagayan Dioro, to enter into unsigned memorandum of agreement with the Xavier Ateneo di Cagayan University, represented by its president Father Mars P. Tan S.J., covering the clinical exposure training of ex-use medical students at the JR Boha General Hospital, the city, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor Maria Lourdes Gaany?
Councilor Maria Lourdes Gaany, you are recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mayhapun, mayhapun ka na tong tanan. I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 89.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number 33 is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 19, authorizing the honorable City Mayor Rolando Aoe, representing the city government of Cagayan Dioro, to enter into unsigned memorandum of agreement, MOA, with the Center for Health Development Northern Mindanao, CHD-NM, represented by its director for Dr. Jose Arliacon Lacona Jr., MD, MPH, CSU 3, covering the implementation of the Health Emergency Allowance, HEA, of health care workers of the JR Boha General Hospital, the city, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Again, for the recognition of Councilor Maria Lourdes S. Gaany.
Councilor Maria Lourdes S. Gaany, you are recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 90.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number 34 is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 91, authorizing the honorable City Mayor Rolando Aoe, representing the city government of Cagayan Dioro as doni, to enter into unsigned the deed of donation and acceptance, DODA, with the Department of Health as donor, represented by its director for Dr. Jose Arliacona Jr., MD, MPH, CSU 3, covering one unit land ambulance, including equipment amounting to 1,957,000 pesos, under the terms and conditions stipulated again. For the recognition of Councilor, no, not again, but for the recognition of the vice chair of the Committee on Health, Councilor Joylin Mercedes El Balaba.
Councilor Joylin Balaba, you recognize the lady in red? Happy New Year?
Happy Chinese Doi.
Chinese.
Advance.
Oh, advance. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I move for the approval of ordinance number 2023 dash 91.
Any second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
We only have two items for inclusion, Madam Presiding Officer. So move for the inclusions of items 35 and 36.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
The impending proposal number 35, proposed ordinance number 2022 dash 92, amending section 2, C2 of ordinance number 14385 dash 2022, otherwise known as the Tax Relief Ordinance of 2022. So as to add, after the first sentence thereof, the provision, "All corresponding accrued penalties, interest, and surcharge shall be waived upon payment of the 30% tax," to read as follows under section 2. May I move for the approval of the said item, Madam Presiding Officer?
I'd like, Majority of Floor Leader, I would like to have this expounded. Because as we have already, what was released before, if I'm not wrong, condemnation, the surges, surges, the penalties, everything will be taken out. So, sa magod ni ang mahitabuani, with payment of 30% sa ay hadayon tangtangon ang mga surges. So meaning, if you pay the 30%, so what happens now? I have patangtangon tong remaining 70%? I have pa matangtang ang ilang mga penalties? May I, may I also call the ways, if you don't mind, Councilor, Majority of Floor Leader? I would like to listen from the ways and means, Councilor George Go King. Kays murabitaug, I want an explanation ngano ingon ani?
Madam Chair.
And of course, Councilor Alam Lim, also the author, no?
In respect to the two proponents, Councilor Alam Lim and Councilor Ayan Nakaya. Ang ako lang, I'm just curious about this. Kays, we already started collecting taxes katong January 3. Kung may amendment karoon, unsa manis siya magretrota, retroact. So I'm not very, I'm just confused about this amendment, Madam Chair. So we have the two proponents here.
Okay, okay. So let us listen, Majority of Floor Leader, please.
May we answer, Madam Presiding Officer? Thank you for the question and clarification. First, the question of the Presiding Officer, the last notice of a payment should be given value for purposes of competition. And 30% of which should be paid in goodwill by the clientele or the taxpayers. Otherwise, if they will not pay the 30%, they would not be given the opportunity to be waived for the another, for the 70% remaining. they would not be given the opportunity to be waived for the 70% remaining.
So meaning bayaran giapun nila ang penalties within the 30%?
Only the 30%.
Like, for example, 1 million, okay? If you pay 30%, 300,000, the 300,000 includes already the surcharges. Kaya pa ni wagi tangtan?
Yes.
So nabayan pa ka?
When we say sur... Penalties and surcharges, effectively, the year that was enacted, that promotes the condemnation was 2022. In other words, the current year then was 2022. So you have to pay what... Yeah. What the last notice of... Notice of delinquency.
The last notice of the delinquency?
That is the... Point of reference.
Okay.
Because every year, even for some quarterly, the City Government through the City Treasurer issues notice of payment on the tax notice.
Yeah.
And the last notice should be given the value for computation, and you should pay 30%.
So that already includes...
And the surcharge is the prior years. That's 2021...
22.
Prior.
Prior ato.
Yes.
So meaning katong atong nakabuhan before, with condemnation, nagitangtang, nagitusiya, then if they have to pay the 30% now...
No, no, it was not implemented, Madam Presiding Officer. On the basis that the real intention of the City Mayor is, there should be an equity of the clientele or the taxpayer. While we give all-out support to the businessman, this should contribute to the development of the city.
So meaning, 30% is still with the penalties pa and delinquencies?
Yes.
And then when they're done with the 30%, the 700,000... Tangtango na dito ang mga penalties? Is that what I...
It would be removed from the record.
From the record?
Because we condoned it already.
So ang ilang bayaran is... Naglibog ko.
The 30%.
Yes? Kasyat lang, Councilor Ayann Mark Nakaya. Councilor Attorney James Judit, James Joey Abu?
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair. I think in my understanding with the amendment, it states there that the 30% bayaran ni mo siya, but... I, in my understanding, it only involves the principal amount. If you pay the 30% of the entire principal amount due, then the delinquencies, the surcharges, surcharges, penalties shall then be removed. For example, in the example given a while ago, kung 1 million ang entire delinquency, tax delinquency, bayaran ni mo ang 300,000. Ang interest o surcharges sa panalitan is 50 mil. Kung bayaran ni mo 30,000, maaway tong 50.
You have to pay the 30%.
Yes. The 300,000 does not include the penalties and the surcharges yet.
So meaning...
It is only the 30% of the entire principal amount due.
Okay. So I want this clear now, because everybody's listening to us, of course, ang businesses. So it is very clear that the 30% is the principal itself. Am I right, Councilor Ayann Mark Nakaya? And Councilor Alam Lim?
Madam Presiding Officer, I was only referring to the certificate of delinquency. I cannot say that I agree totally to the explanation of Councilor Joey Abu, because under the provisions of the ordinance that we have enacted in 2022 and the same mandatory ordinance, again, the taxpayer shall attach the notice of assessment together with the certificate of delinquency in abeying the amnesty and relief. In other words, I would like to base what is written and the content of the certificate of delinquency. So I cannot answer whether or not to include the entire penalty surcharges, which is may be found or may not be found in the certificate of delinquency.
Okay. Again, Councilor Attorney...
Yes, that's also possible, Madam Chair. But I'm just also, I'm only referring with the proposed amendment provision, the section 2, paragraph C, subparagraf 2, which states that persons and corporations with pending tax cases through the examination of books of accounts shall pay the equivalent of 30% of the total tax delinquency as appearing in the notice of delinquency. The tax delinquency is, does not involve the surcharges and penalties. Precisely, this second sentence is added that if you pay the 30% of the entire total tax delinquency, all corresponding accrued penalties, interest, and surcharges shall then be waived upon payment of the 30% tax.
So mubayad sa ka?
30%.
30% of the principal amount. If you pay the 30% of the principal amount, then the surcharges shall then be waived.
Then ayha dayon ma-wave ang imong surcharges of delinquencies. So it is clear? Very clear? Ka interview niya ko be, gadi ko ke balo. Is, am I right, Councilor Alam Lim? So 30%, pay the 30% of the principal. Then upon payment of the principal, all the penalties and surcharges, delinquencies will be taken out. Am I clear?
Councilor Edgar Cabanlas would like to be recognized.
Edgar Cabanlas, please, you recognize?
If the 30% is applied to the surcharges and interest, then it would become... Not... There is an effect of the law. So it must apply to the principal.
Principal here.
The, I think 30% to be paid on the principal is for the purpose of making sure that you'll pay the principal, all in all. And that's a sign that you can avail of the...
Condonation.
Condonation.
Ah, okay.
So in the computation of the 30%, exclude the principal. I exclude the surcharges. You pay the principal. And once you have the receipt that you have paid the principal 30%, then... Surcharges tangtan na tanan. Kaya kung ilakip mo sa 30% ang surcharges, it becomes irrelevant.
Okay.
Ineffective, nothing. Siya lang kabak uilakip ni mo sa 30%. Wala effecto ang atong...
So we are, so we are now...
Of the principal.
Yes. So we are now paying the principal muna para makavel ka sa condemnation.
Ayaw ilakip ang 30% sa interest and surcharges kay, wala na na meaning.
Okay. So claro ha? Claro na, Councilor Alam Lim, is that clear? Also, Councilor Ayann Mark?
If that is the case, because we are presuming that the certificate of delinquency only covers the principal, and I guess that is the understanding of many of the members of the council, and that should be, that should be written under this ordinance. So I move for the styling, perhaps. Because if it is a prior year, Madam Presiding Officer, when you read a delinquency notice, there are surcharges and penalties. In other words, that's included. Then we're talking about prior years. It's not an imagination, because I have read also a notice imposed upon me as a taxpayer who failed to pay on time, and when I read the notice, there are surcharges and penalties that I have received. That is why I am dependent on the definition of the now pending proposal, which is the certificate of delinquency. Otherwise, if we modify the definition of certificate of delinquency, exclude the surcharges and interest...
Only the principal.
Only the principal.
30%.
I agree, but it should be written.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that it would be modified according to the whims of the council.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, Councilor Ayann Mark Nakaya. Yes, Councilor Joey Abu?
Then, if that should be the case, Madam Chair, then, instead of just placing here shall pay the equivalent of 30% of the total tax delinquency as per appearing in the notice of delinquency, perhaps you can add there the total tax delinquency of the principal amount? Principal tax due?
Tax due.
Yes. So that they will not create confusion.
Again, again, please.
Instead of persons, corporations with pending tax cases through the examination of books of account shall pay the equivalent of 30% of the total tax delinquency... Butangan lang giapun sa of the total principal tax due. Subject to styling.
That could clarify things.
So that there will be no confusion, that ma-phil ang sa total tax delinquency, ang surcharges and penalties. Principal lang yun siya.
Principal lang yun siya, yeah. 30%, that will encourage our, ano, our mga mubayad. Gaya 30% bayas sa mo, then ayha natutangtangon. That should be the case, diba? Kay encouraging them to pay the 30%.
That would form part in the parenthesis, Mr. Secretary. Okay? The... And to the question of Councilor Kuya George Go-King, Madam Presiding Officer?
Yes.
Under the ordinance that we have passed in the previous year, we have given four months, terms, right? How many months? And we have given them four months to settle, right? So in other words, from October, November, December, January, February. So we still have two months for the businessmen to file their application before the City Mayor and the City Treasurer. So it's not yet over. It's not yet over, it's still implementable.
So it is still, we are also included the real property tax?
Unless Councilor Go-King is proposing to extend the four months to six months.
Only the business? Di, kinamay, ang real property tax namang giapun mga...
Business tax na siya.
Yeah, kay ang real property is, we have also penalties.
Councilor Go-King is proposing, Madam Presiding Officer, to extend the four months to six months.
Ah, okay.
Is that correct?
So meaning, meaning that will be due when?
February, that's the fourth month, March, April.
Ah, okay.
Since we failed to implement this, we will extend to April. So additional two months.
Okay, until April? Okay, that's good.
Move for the amendment, Madam Presiding Officer, to conform with the wishes of the majority as regards the principal tax due, and to extend the implementation of this condemnation from four months to six months.
Okay, so any second? Any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? Yes?
Okay, okay.
Okay, Councilor Attorney James Judit?
Ako laning klarohan sa section 2, C, subparagraph 1. O ganidaing sa section 2, C, subparagraph 2, kay ang sa subparagraph 1, dibutang din 50% ang yang bayaran sa mag-retiro na or magsira sa ilang...
That is not pending proposal, Madam Presiding Officer.
That is a different...
Only the city.
Yeah, we are, we are... Subparagraph 2.
Subparagraph 2.
Ah, ah, sa 2.
2, only 2.
Lahi na siya, that is closure, retirement of the businesses. Okay, let's proceed.
Number 36 is proposed resolution number 2022-197, earnestly requesting the Honorable Actings Presiding Judge Ana Candida N. Casino of Branch 24 Regional Trial Court of Misamisurin Trial, 10th Judicial Region, this city, to hold in abeyance the implementation of the writ of demolition in civil case number CV 2012-288-R, entitled Years of Felicidad v. Luna, plaintiff versus Agripino Aquino et al., defendants for recovery of possession with damages at Banaba Street, Zone 5, Ilaya Carmen, this city, for a period of three months to enable the City Government of Cagayan de Oro through the City Housing and Urban Development Department to conduct socioeconomic survey of the affected residents thereof and to identify a suitable relocation area for them. Proponents, City Vice Mayor Juslin B. Rodriguez and Councilor Edgar Cabanlas. May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor Edgar Cabanlas?
Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Majority Floor. Kadi, the people affected are subject now of writ of demolition in Banaba, Carmen. Madam Chair, so we are requesting the court, and also the sheriff, to extend the demolition, to hold in abeyance the demolition for three months.
Three months.
We have to have a fixed period, because we cannot ask for a definite period. We might be violating the separation of the judiciary and the legislative department. So, once the three-year, three-month period arrives, then we will request another extension, if that will be granted. That will depend on the discretion of the court.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Second?
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
There being no other pending motion, pending proposal, Madam Chair, move for the adjournment.
Session adjourned. Wala sa tais na classroom, kay nanambukman ta. Oh, atong barong nga, next session, Monday, barong nagyon. Girl and female and male will should wear barong para uniform ang pagkuha sa video. Thank you very much. Ay, hahaha, ningil mo, sa'yo pa kayo na ningil. Atong nung tunan, kay murag na atay makuhaan siya na, ah? Okay, thank you.